All right, Mr. Nopper, I see it's 6:30. I think we'll get underway as we have, I guess, three meetings tonight and definitely a few agenda items. So calling to order the public hearing of objections to bylaw 21-06. That is to impose a special business improvement levy. It is Monday, November 29th at 6:30. And due to COVID-19, we once again will be hosting this via Zoom. If anyone would like to voice any objections, they can send an email to pnoper@townofstandrews.ca. And I will take the time just to spell that simply for it is a hearing of objections and we normally have to wait. So I'd rather take the extra time to make sure that if anyone wants to message, they should do so right away in regards to this bylaw. So P Nopper, Nopper is N-O-P-P-E-R and it's @townofstandrews.ca and St. Andrews is just S-T. So we jump into the agenda. The first thing is we'll do is we'll record attendance. All members of council are in attendance with exception of Counselor Gou Michel. We'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda circulated. Counselor Heenan and seconded by Counselor Neil, any discussion on this agenda? Pretty straightforward with one item. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye. And that is everybody, the agenda has been approved. Any disclosure of conflict of interest? There is none, no presentation. So brings us into, once again, the purpose of tonight. It's a hearing of objections. It is bylaw 21-06, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy. And just to read it in quotation is the council, the town of St. Andrews is holding a public meeting to hear objections to the proposed bylaw 21-06. A bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy. From my understanding, Mr. Nopper, there's been no changes to the previous years past that this has passed. Has there been anyone that has reached out though? Traditionally, for this particular hearing of objections, I don't recall ever actually hearing an objection. So has there been anything? It's a legal requirement.
Your worship know, the town has received no hearing or letters of objection to bylaw 21-06 and haven't received any comments thus far.
Okay, so since it just began, we will give it just a couple of minutes. You know, at this point, since we've never had one on this one, there has been ample time. We've discussed it. I'll leave it open until 6:35 and then I'll be at that point looking for a motion to adjourn. But we'll leave it open for three minutes, just in case somebody is watching online and is typing up an email. The easiest thing to do would be probably to request through Paul to actually join if at all possible. That would probably be the quickest, quickest way to actually getting on. You will have to provide Mr. Nopper some of your information though, including your address, your building, et cetera, like that to make sure you can get on. Simply for the fact that we've had a few people, when it was more open unfortunately, going just for the simple sake of packing a meeting. So we'll leave it at that. So we'll give just another minute. I do note that Counselor Gou Michel is just having issues logging on, so he should be joining us shortly as well. Well, we're waiting. Counselor Neil, how many players did you guys have for the high school team this weekend?
We had two lines, 13 skaters, I think. We're short staffed, but.
I heard it's been tough getting numbers right now with injuries and commitments and things like that.
Few injuries, few illnesses, but kids played well. They're playing a very strong team and they held their own, so.
Good.
Good to see.
And they're young, are they not?
Yes, yeah, it's a young team this year, which is good for next year and the following years.
Is it a bulk of grade 11 or grade 10 students or even nine?
Yeah, it's a little combination of both, 10 and 11 mainly.
Hello, Counselor Gou Michel. We're just giving another minute for the hearing of objections to the bylaw, but so far there has been none. Like a lot of the BIA levies that we've seen in the past.
Sorry, just was having trouble getting the calendar and the link to fire up there. Thank you.
No problem. You haven't missed a thing. All right, it's 6:35 I have here, Mr. Nopper. So I am going to, at this point, unless counsel has anything they'd like to add, I can't see that, but I just want to make sure. I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. I see Counselor Heenan once again seconded by Counselor Neil. All in favor of adjourning, please signal by by raising your hand.
Aye.
And this first meeting has been adjourned. So we'll shut off and get going for the next one at 6:45.
You are allowed to Facebook, counsel.
All right, I note that it is 6:45, Mr. Nopper, so we'll get underway. Going to call to order the special council meeting here on Monday, November 29th, 6:45 PM. Posted through Zoom due to COVID-19 restrictions and it'll be streamed live via Facebook. Anyone has any questions on anything related to the agenda this evening, please reach out to us at pnoper@townofstandrews.ca. We will note that all members of council are in attendance, so I will be looking for a mover for the approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover? Counselor Hurdle and seconded by Deputy Mayor Akaji, any discussion or changes required on this agenda for this evening? Seeing none, all in favor of approving this agenda, please show by raising your hand. That is everybody and this agenda has been approved. So disclosure of conflict of interest, is there anything in regards to the two agenda items or the presentation this evening that anyone is at conflict? Seeing none, so we will move right into presentations. I'd like to welcome, it says Brianna Coe, but also Rose is with us this evening as well. Good to see you again, Rose. And there with Eastern Charlotte Waterways, they'll be doing a presentation over a very exciting initiative in regards to the electric car ride share program. Project Village and council has already approved a parking space for this particular vehicle. But at this point, we will pass the floor over to them as the more that council knows and obviously the general public on this program, the more likely that it will be the success we all hope it is. So I'll pass the floor over to you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just share my screen first. Okay, for a moment. Is anybody seeing my screen?
Yes, we're seeing your screen and we see your full presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. So good evening, everyone. Before we proceed with our presentation for tonight, we would like to thank the town of St. Andrews, your worship and the counselors for giving us this opportunity to be able to share with you the wonderful things that are happening in our community through ECW's current projects. So we appreciate your time and for listening to us. So our presentation is about Project Village Car Share. So to give a little bit of a background, the Project Village is this one big initiative spearheaded by ECW. And it's comprised of different segments. So we have the food, the shelter and the transportation. So the car share program is under the transportation arm of that bigger Project Village initiative. So what we'll cover for this presentation are the transportation challenges, the key objectives to support rural transportation, the Project Village Car Share, how we got here and where we're going. So it also includes the standard operating procedures, the car share service policies, first structure and matrix. And lastly, we'll have the floor for question and answer and the next steps for this project. So here is the transportation challenges. So shown in this graphic presentation are the community issues that contribute to a bigger transportation challenge we have in this region. So I know that every one of you have our, we shared the presentation beforehand. So we'll be happy to share this presentation again afterwards, after this presentation. So next is the key objective. So what do we hope to accomplish through this meeting? Number one is to present the management, the management and operations framework of car share transportation system. Second, to secure good partnership with the local municipality and community leaders for the success of this transportation program. Third is to receive the local municipalities feedback to enhance the car share management and operations. And lastly, to address any questions and areas of concern related to this car share initiative. So here is the car share progress timeline that summarizes how we got here, where we're at and where we're heading to. So first, we submitted our grant application last October for the ECCC Climate Action and Awareness Grant. And we have successfully received the funding last May. And through this funding, we were able to purchase four electric vehicles. These are Hyundai Conas from St. John Hyundai. We also outsourced our car share software, which is the Survey platform from YHC Mobilite last June. We had our open house wherein we introduced the concept of the Project Village and its different segments to the community members. We also had our, our Survey platform installed in the, in each vehicles last August. We had our car share operations development wherein we met with our organizational partners and had them involved in the development of the operations of this program. And now we're working towards the Project Village Car Share pilot run, which will happen this winter 2021. And we are working very hard to, with your participation as well, we're working very hard towards a very successful pilot run. And if everything goes well, we'll do the pilot, the public launch this spring of 2022. So what is car share model? So it is a transportation model where an individual books a ride time for a vehicle and drives it. So car share system operates based on the moving demand for vehicle rides. And the core benefits of car share services are shared car usage time and cost distribution among community members. So if a, if a vehicle can be shared with multiple people, we can expand the transportation services to community members with different or unique traveling needs. Furthermore, the shared vehicle time will cause this transportation model to be affordable as the cost of operations will be distributed to members. The car share service can therefore be expanded or extended to groups with low income. So the standard operating procedures of the car share is a very tedious work. Also with the policies and things like that, but this standard operating procedures has two phases. So phase one is the membership application. This is a one-time process that every interested applicant go through to be a member of this program. Next is the phase two, which is a ride booking process. This is a repeating procedure for, for all the members. Every time that they wanted to book a ride with these electric vehicles. So the membership application is as easy as one, two, three. So the first one would be an applicant would express his interest to be a part of this program by emailing us. Second is that they create a members account through Survey platform. And third is that they would receive the Survey RFID card, which is the access card for the vehicles once that they have an approved membership with us. So for phase two, it's the same. It's a one, two, three step. So the first one is to schedule your trip using the Survey platform. Next is to physically access the electric vehicle and start your trip. And next is to physically return the electric vehicle and end your trip. So the car share service policy is of the tedious of the tedious, this is the tedious one. So the car share service policy is a very, a very detailed document that contains the, the proper handling and the dos and don'ts of the car share operations. But a high level overview of our car share service policy includes, number one, the car share operations. So this gives you the details of the operation runtime, the, the service feature and the service inclusion of the car share. Next is the general use policy, which states the proper handling and the proper utilization of the assets, which are the electric vehicles. Next is the restricted use of the vehicles, penalties and charges. And lastly is the accident and property damage. So we will, we're be happy to provide you with the reference material that contains all of the information, the description of each policies. So we will provide those materials after this presentation. Fair structure and matrix, before we go deep into details of this section, let's first discuss the cost distribution concept. So generally, the Project Village Car Share program takes a membership service structure. And it is, it is because, number one, the eligibility requirements for accessing the car sharing service. And number two, the cost of operation. So for cost distribution concept, we have the membership fees and the base rate fees. So the membership fees covers the fixed cost of the operation. And this includes the system license, the insurance fees, the car registration, road assistance, maintenance and e-charge membership. On the other hand, the base fare rate covers the variable cost of the operation, which are the power consumption every time that you charge the vehicle and the short-term repair services. So in this diagram shown to you, this will show you how the fair strategy works for the Project Village Car Share. So number one, we have a prospective user. So a prospective user can be classified as a long-term member or a short-term member. So a long-term member is someone who is expected to use the car share services more frequently or more regularly than any other. So there, it's more advisable for them to purchase or subscribe into a membership plan so that their overall service rate charge would be reduced or will be more discounted. On the other hand, the short-term member is someone who uses, who is expected to use the car or the car share services very infrequently, very seldomly, that they pass on from subscribing into a membership plan and just straight on paying the regular service rate of each use of the car. So you'll have also in here the level one fee charge and the level two fee charge. So the level one fee charge is the membership plans. This is the membership fees. So it's all, it's only applicable to long-term members who has the membership plans. So we have here the community membership plan and the business membership plan. The community membership plan is way, you would see later that it's way more discounted than the business membership plan. On the other hand, the left two fee charge, this is what we call the service rate or the fare rate, the fare matrix. So the long-term members rate, you will see later that it's more reduced, more discounted, more affordable than the short-term members rate. So the membership fees, you would see here, it's between the community members and the business members. So a membership plan could be arranged by monthly plan or by year lock plan. So you would notice in here that the community for both monthly and year lock, the annual plan is way more affordable than the business one. Also, you would see that there's a one-time fee. So this registration fee of $12 is applicable for both long-term members and short-term members. And the reason behind this is that this $12 will compensate for the Survey RFID cards that you have as a primary key to the cars. So the cars, they don't have keys inside. So in order for members to lock and unlock the car, they should have the, the Survey access card with them as their primary key to the cars. So next one is the fare matrix. You would see here on the left-hand side, there are ride bookings per hour, the duration of the rides. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the inclusion of the distance that it could cover. So the fare matrix is categorized per, for long-term member and for short-term members. If you can see here, overall, the long-term member rate is way more discounted, way more affordable than the short-term member rates. So the one hour, for example, one hour of car sharing service for 150 kilometer coverage, a long-term member only pays $8. On the other hand, the short-term member pays $12 per use. We would like to be clear that all of these numbers in here, in the membership plan and in the fare matrix, they're all estimated costs. The taxes are not, the tax percentage are not in here. The credit card payment services fee are not in here. So when we roll out our operation, the numbers might be a little different. It's because the taxes will be accounted for and the credit card payment services fee will be accounted for as well. So that concludes our presentation for tonight and we would like to give our, the floor for question and answer. But before that, we would like to say thank you again for your time and for listening to us and for staying. We would like to open the, the floor for any questions and feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the, the presentation this evening. Myself and Chris Spear and Paul Nopper, we've been fairly close to this one, had the opportunity to see the presentation, go to the demonstration and it's greatly appreciated. But for some members of council, some of this information is new. So open the floor to them, see if there's any questions at this time from any member of council. Counselor Neil.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And again, yes, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was really interesting. This is certainly a, an interesting project for the town of St. Andrews. The one question I had, and it's probably a simple one for you, is just what, what will differentiate a long-term user versus a short-term user?
Okay, um, the, the long-term user is someone who see themselves as the, someone who would regularly use the vehicle. So for example, if I am someone who would use the vehicle like, like two times a week or one time a week, it would, it would be considered as a regular user. However, for example, on the other hand, a short-term user could be someone who is, for example, I'm just visiting St. Andrews for some traveling plans for, for tourism purposes. And I just want a car, like just a quick use of the car. And I'm not from here, for example, I'm from Ontario or a different place, far from St. Andrews. I could, they could still avail the car share service, but they're going to use it like just one time, two times. But they're not going to be regulars in here since they are not residents of Charlotte County.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess what I was getting at is what, like with regards to the fee structure, what would stop me if I wanted to use the car one time from registering as a long-term user?
Oh.
You guys are going to monitor that somehow.
Yeah, we have a requirement. So when, when they're applying both short-term and long-term members, they need to submit to us some documents. So because of the, the provincial law involving, you know, the, the use of the car, the modern vehicles, we need to have their license, like a copy of their license, the data and the abstract. So right there and then, if we see that they submitted a license, like for example, from a different province, we would know for sure that this is like a short-term, a, a short-term member. We will, we won't be, we won't be offering them a long time's membership plan. We're going to just say, we reviewed your, your documents, your requirements are all good and valid. So you can use the, the car, but we're not going to be, they're going to be under the regular, the, the regular higher charge rates.
Um, if I, if I don't mind also interjecting, thank you so much, Counselor Neil, for your questions. Um, another point of not being able to do that would be if you registered as a long-time member, you'd have to pay monthly or an annual-based fee. So you can't necessarily, you know, it's an $8 ride for an hour opposed to a $12 ride for an hour, but you're still paying upfront cost. So that's kind of a deterrent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other member of council?
If I may, worship.
Absolutely.
Well, actually, Counselor Gou Michel, would you like me to refer to Counselor Gou?
Sorry, I just wanted to echo, echo Counselor Neil's comments on how exciting this initiative is. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Spear. So just a couple of things, Rose, and thank you for the presentation. There's something that I've thought about before, but it never came up. So you talk about corporate use, but it's corporate private sector stuff or that be organizations, nonprofit organizations that would have memberships when you talk about the corporate use? The other thing is, when you started off the presentation, you talked about the poverty rates and stuff in Charlotte County and how this was a use for that. But as I look right now, you know, those that are financially challenged, this isn't going to be an option for a bit. So I guess the question is, is there still an ongoing process to figure out if I can buy those that can't quite have the financial resources to do this, to be able to get access to the car?
Chris, for that question, I see that the counselors are interested with this presentation. So thank you so much. With your question though, we are actually working with, I'm proud to say that we're working with Charlotte Dial-a-Ride. We are in partner with them basically to complement the services that they already doing in the community because they have the, there's an overlap of the kind of community or the kind of groups that we wanted to, to serve. Aside from partnering with them, we're also, once this car share service rollout, we're also looking for other opportunities for partnership, like for example, multicultural association. The, the NBCC, the, as I say, the Charlotte, Charlotte Dial-A-Ride and not other nonprofit organizations so that we could arrange some sort of subsidy program for them. But this is going to be developed in the future. So we're, we're focusing on the, on the pilot run of the, of the project. But we also keep in mind that as we expand to more groups, we are expecting that we can, that, that we will be encountering members of the, members of the community that are like on, on low income, sometimes beyond the low income, and we are pursuing to develop some subsidy, subsidy programs for them and through this partnership with the organization. So.
Counselor Blanchard.
Thank you, worship. And again, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to quickly make note, while this is a very interesting project in and of itself, the Project Village project, which Eastern Charlotte, Charlotte Waterways has undertaken, is, is transportation, but it's also about affordable housing. And I just wanted to throw that in there as well because obviously these are things that are impacting and are, are being rolled out across Charlotte County. But the, the affordable housing piece is something obviously that we on council have been discussing quite a bit. So I just wanted to throw that out there for the, for the benefit of the rest of council, maybe to look into that as well. There might be some, some opportunities there for us to, to investigate further.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Blanchard. I saw Counselor Heenan saying, and then Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship and counsel, and thank you for the great presentation. I just had one question. If we're deal, if we're using clients of a lower income and they have children, what about car seats? Like, some people may, may not have them if they don't own a vehicle. Is there car seats available or how do we, how do we make sure that the kids are using car seats? Just a quick question. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your question, Counselor Heenan. I appreciate it. Um, so we actually looked into the question of car seats because that was one that I had as well. And unfortunately, because of insurance and not being able to, not being able to basically say that we know this is a safe car seat and got, that it gets dropped or in an accident or we're not, we can't legally supply those. But of course, you know, they'll be rude for them in the vehicles if individuals can use them for sure.
Thank you. Good question. Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was great. And I know about car seats because if you are social assistants or whatever, they do have their own car seats, like their social assistants does provide them. Because I drive for Dial-a-Ride and they come with their car seats, but they have to be able to be buckled into the car. And as Brianna said, they will be. So most of them are given a secure car seat from social assistants. I, I didn't mean to butt in there, but thank you for the wonderful presentation. I look forward to seeing this vehicle on the road. And I see that you have long-term like usage, like, you know, four days or overnight. overnight. I, I think it's wonderful to see. I just can't wait to see them on the road and where they're plugging in sort of thing. So thank you very much for all your hard work, Rose and Brianna. It's a great initiative and it will be, I'm sure, well-used. Thank you very much.
You, Deputy Mayor. All right. I, I just wanted to echo Counselor Blanchard's comments. I've, I've been fortunate to be in a couple of presentations regarding this and I've had a lot of questions, obviously, through the, the, the period. But this winter, having the test in the community is gonna be where a lot of questions get answered. And there's a lot of questions that no one at this, on this Zoom call has even thought of yet that are gonna come up. But I'm really looking forward to that. And again, to echo Counselor Blanchard, I do know that Project Village is Black River based, but the fact that Project Village is almost Project Village and neighbors, it truly means a lot to the town of St. Andrews. And a lot of the key issues, again, to Counselor Blanchard's comment that you're that you're tackling are critical issues to our community. So any initiative that you guys are looking to roll out in the region, our doors open. We, we wanna hear it. We wanna try to be part of it. So thank you for allowing the town of St. Andrews to be a partner in the car sharing program. I, I'd be, I'll be, I would be extremely disappointed if we weren't. So I just wanted to let you know how, how appreciative we are of that and anything we can do to make sure it's successful, we certainly will. So thanks for your time this evening. We've got another agenda, but we really appreciate you presenting to council tonight and look forward to a follow-up meeting after we do some testing.
Thank you so much, your worship and other counselors. And thank you again for your time. We do appreciate it.
Have a great night. All right. We're gonna get into the introduction consideration of passing of bylaws. I will put a couple of counselors on spot. Hopefully, they have the agenda in front of them. Counselor Hurdle, I'll get you to do E1 if you can, since it falls technically under your portfolio.
E1 being the BTHC 211002.
Being the bylaw twenty-one dash oh six.
That's correct. Yes, that's right. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Right. So bylaw twenty-one dash zero six, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy for twenty-twenty-two for third and final reading. As part of, the background is this is part of our downtown beautification initiatives. The St. Andrews Business Improvement Area collects an annual levy from its members to pay for various projects and events. The BIA established in nineteen eighty-four is a geographical area between Water Street and Princess Royal to Elizabeth Street. All businesses within this area are within the BIA and subject to the annual levy. As per the Business Improvement Area Act of New Brunswick, council must set the levy annually by bylaw, which also includes approval of their budget in a public hearing of objection. The first reading was Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, the second reading Monday, November eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and the public hearing of objections today, Monday, November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. And the motion is that the council grants leave for third and final reading of the bylaw twenty-one dash zero six, a bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy for twenty-twenty-two in the town of St. Andrews. That's a move.
Can I have a second or?
Deputy Mayor, worship.
Deputy Mayor and discussion. Normally, we don't do third reading on the night of a hearing objections, but since we had no hearing of objections, we're able to proceed. Any more discussion on this one? All the question, all those in favor of going to third reading, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody that has been approved. I will read this in entirety quickly as it is a short one. This is Town of St. Andrews bylaw number twenty-one dash oh six. Bylaw of the town of St. Andrews to impose a special business improvement levy. Pursuant to section five, one of the Business Improvement Areas Act, RSNB two thousand and four, circa one oh two, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follow. A special business improvement tax shall be levied for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-two on all non-residential property within the Business Improvement Area of the town of St. Andrews, sorry. Business Improvement Area of the town, said area having been designated in the Town of St. Andrews bylaw number seventy-two, enacted on June fourth, nineteen eighty-four. To that the Special Business Improvement Tax for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-two, they'll be at a rate of twenty cents on each one hundred dollar assessment of real property being the non-residential property in the Business Improvement Area. It's read a first time on the twenty-fifth of October, a second time on the eighth of November. And we had the hearing of objections here on the twenty-ninth of November, followed by a third and final reading on the twenty-ninth of November. So that has been carried. We will move into the next one, which I believe will be Counselor Heenan. Maybe not.
I believe it's me, your honor.
It's you. Okay, I got that one wrong. Go, go ahead. Thank you. I'm missing a page of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, your worship. This is reference number PS two one 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 zero six. The subject is one forty-five Princess Royal Street demolition order as per bylaw nineteen dash zero four. A bylaw of the town of St. Andrews respecting dangerous or unsightly premises. The background reads, the town of St. Andrews has been proceeding with enforcement measures under bylaw nineteen dash zero four. A bylaw of town of St. Andrews respecting dangerous or unsightly premises for the structure at one forty-five Princess Royal Street. The structure at one forty-five Princess Royal falls under bylaw nineteen dash zero four, section four, bracket three, where no person shall permit a building or other structure owned or occupied by the person to become a hazard to the safety of the public by reason of dilapidation or unsoundness of strength. So after several external inspections from the spring of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and a thorough internal inspection of the structure in August of twenty twenty-one by the Building Inspector and Enforcement Officer of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, it was determined the structure met section four, bracket three. Bylaw enforcement provided notices to comply orders to the owners of one forty-five Princess Royal Street. The owners appealed the decision under section seven of bylaw nineteen dash zero four. And an independent appeals committee was established by the council of the town of St. Andrews in September. In October, the appeal committee upheld the notices to comply with the stipulation of demolition on or by November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, which was provided in writing. A development permit was purchased by the owners and issued by Southern New Brunswick Service Commission with the stipulated date. To date, the structure remains standing. The owners requested an extension date of the notices to comply, which were discussed at the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one meeting. After debate and discussion, the direction was given to staff to bring forward motions for demolition and for a company to complete the demolition. As the owners have not complied with the notices to comply, council can move to demolish under section ten of bylaw nineteen dash zero four. So the first motion reads that council approves the immediate demolition cleanup, safe removal and disposal in an approved landfill facility of the entire structure at one forty-five Princess Royal Street as per section ten, bracket one, bracket C of bylaw nineteen dash zero four. A bylaw of the town of St. Andrews respecting dangerous or unsightly premises. And I so move this.
Could I have a second or for that motion, Counselor Heenan? And now we will open it up for any comments or debate. Counselor Blanchard.
Thank you, worship. Just on this, I, I, I'll be voting against the, the motion, but I just wanted to be clear as to why I actually support. I do support the, the motion to demolish. I think it's been duly debated and discussed and the appeals have been heard. I was just, where there was a, a request for an extension and I was supportive of that. That's the only reason I would vote against this motion. Again, I am supportive of the demolition, but I, I was in favor of granting an extension. I just wanted to make that clear and put it on the record. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Counselor Blanchard. Anyone else of council before we go to vote?
Your worship, Counselor Gou Michel. I'd like to echo Counselor Blanchard's comments.
Thank you, Counselor Blanchard, or Counselor Gou Michel. Any other member of council? Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you, worship. I too felt the very similar to Counselor Blanchard and Counselor Gou Michel. Although I guess in the discussions we had and the realization that there will probably be two to three weeks or more before this actually takes place. I will be voting in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neal. Any other member of council? Deputy Mayor Akaji.
I know it was a great deliberation that we had and great conversation that we had, but I, like Counselor Neal, I agree that this should be torn down and that there will be some time for like before they have to, well, to try and get everything out. They've had a long term and we've discussed it many times and it's, it's a hard thing to do, but I think for the safety of, of our constituents', young children, anybody in the area, the people who live nearby, our fire or police that have to go in there for whatever reason. It's not safe and I, I would just feel bad if somebody got injured inside that building. So I will be voting in favor of having it demolished.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Akaji. Any other member of council? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Okay, I've got four hands. I'm just confirming Counselor Heenan, Counselor Hurdle, Deputy Mayor Akaji, Counselor Neal, all those opposed. Would be Counselor Gou Michel and Counselor Blanchard. So by a vote of four to two, that motion has been carried. Thank you very much, council. And I do take note of all of your comments. Obviously, not an easy thing to do. This file has been active for months, as, as we're all aware. There has been some extensions granted throughout this process as well. This isn't the first extension request. And I, I do feel for council as I think this is the last thing they want to do. But when it comes to public safety, being a structurally unsound building, a block, almost a block away from the elementary school, holes in the roof with electricity still running to the building. And we have volunteer fire department that has to go to those calls. I think unfortunately, despite how this is tough, it is not a primary residence for anyone that I'm aware of. It's, it's actually, at this point, a, a building that isn't occupied. So it is a tough decision, but you know, unfortunately, sometimes town councils or governments or businesses or whatever have to make tough decisions, especially when it comes to safety. So I just wanted to just echo that I know that that wasn't an easy decision for you this evening. But thank you for all showing up and showing your vote on that. There's nothing under new business, question period. Has anything came in, Mr. Nopper?
Sorry, your worship. There's still one more motion to that.
Oh, sorry, there is a part B to that. I'll go. Thank you. Way ahead of myself. Go ahead, Counselor Neal.
Your worship, the second motion reads that council directs staff to hire a third-party company to complete the immediate demolition cleanup, safe removal and disposal in an approved landfill facility of the entire structure at one forty-five Princess Royal Street as per section ten, bracket one, bracket C of bylaw nineteen dash oh four. A bylaw of the town of St. Andrews respecting dangerous or unsightly premises by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And I so move this.
Thank you. So again, this one isn't actually for the demolition. It is in regards to hiring the third party. Is there any discussion on this? I'll get a second or actually first. Counselor Heenan, any discussion on this one? Call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. I'm counting five, four, and anyone opposed? Counselor Gou Michel is opposed, so vote to five to one that, that motion is carried as well. I did get ahead of myself. Any questions, Mr. Nopper, at this point? There is no questions, any comments further? We are going right to another meeting, but so council can comment at that time, but anything pertaining to this agenda? Seeing none, I don't have anything. So I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Akaji and seconded by Counselor Gou Michel, all in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody. We are adjourned and we'll be going with a seven fifteen meeting momentarily. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Nopper. We are going to get this meeting going. We're a few minutes late, but we did have meetings before to know that it was a possibility. Calling to order the Committee of Council meeting here on Monday, November twenty-ninth, which was directly after the special council meeting. Posted on Zoom due to COVID nineteen restrictions. Anyone that has any questions or comments regarding tonight's agenda in this meeting, please email peenopper@townofstandrews.ca. Let's get into the recording of attendance. All members of council are here. But I have a mover to approve the agenda. I've got Counselor Heenan seconded by Counselor Hurdle. Any changes to this agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this agenda signify by raising your hand. That is everybody. The agenda has been approved. We're getting in disclosure of conflict of interest. Counselor Hurdle, go ahead first if you'd like.
Yeah, thanks. Just regarding FA two one one zero seven, not any issue between myself and the town, but just between myself and my employer. Just want to make sure that I'm just in that one.
You very much. Counselor Blanchard.
Yes, if there is discussion around the, I guess it's the, the Bellmax proposal there, I would recuse myself from that discussion.
Thank you very much, Counselor Blanchard. Anyone else? Myself, I will be declaring one again around the Charlie bourgeois development, which is the Van Horn Garden Homes. So I'll be looking for Deputy Mayor Akaji to once again, take the lead on that. So thank you very much, members of council. I'll look to you yourself, just to shut your camera and mic off at that particular time. But appreciate you disclosing those. If anything comes up throughout the meeting for anyone else or another one, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. We have no presentations as we just received one in our previous meeting. Great questions from council. Good to see the two-way dialogue. Nothing under correspondence. So we will get into the introduction consideration, consideration of passing of bylaws. Just a reminder that we're setting wording tonight. There is some of these motions I do anticipate probably some debate, but in reality, the debate actually happens next week. So just to keep this moving, this meeting moving, again, it's just forming the wording of the motions. So if we jump into that, the first wording will be going out to finance and administration. So that'll be Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship. FA two one 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 zero seven. The Czech Signing Authority and I think Counselor Hurdle has signed off. The background is, it's about the Bank of Nova Scotia and the Signing Authority of the mayor or deputy mayor, the CA or treasurer or assistant treasurer. Now with it, the, with the departure of the assistant treasurer, it leaves the CA or treasurer as the only member from staff who can sign. In case of an unexpected illness or disability, it leaves no one available for the required second signature. It is staff's recommendation to appoint Mary LeBlanc, accounting clerk, as a temporary second signing officer. So then the motion will be that we go through the motion of setting that up and shouldn't be a problem. But and also with the Mary Tate, and I don't think there's a problem, but.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. It is a long motion. So I'll save you from, from reading it as it is the correct wording. So unless anyone has a concern about that, that's just some general housekeeping. Deputy Mayor Akaji.
I did, I did speak to Mr. Nopper about it. I am Kate Akaji, but my full signature is Catherine with a C, C A T H E R I N E and my middle initial A and then Akaji.
Mr. Nopper will note that for next week and get that updated as that is your banking name for sure. Thank you for breaking that. We'll call that a friendly amendment. We're working on wording to make sense. Okay, let's move on to the next one. I think Counselor Hurdle can come back if he's, he's available. He's back, your worship.
Okay, the second one is FA two one one zero zero seven, which is the amendment number three to bylaw sixteen dash oh three, a procedural bylaw for the organization and operation of the council in the town of St. Andrews. And this will be the first reading. So I think the wording is okay.
Yes.
Similar to the last one.
Mr. Nopper, your worship, please note that it is actually for second reading.
All right. Did I say first?
Yeah, it says, it says first. That'll be updated for the next one. All right, Mr. Nopper.
It is second.
Yeah.
Sorry, didn't catch. Okay. And then if that passes, you will be reading that all the way through there.
Perfect. Next one.
And the next one is FA two one 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 zero six. And it's the application to the municipal capital borrowing board. So as part of our twenty twenty-two budget process, council agreed to borrow the money from the general capital fund and utility capital fund to partially finance capital expansions. And the funds of the general capital fund have been previously approved by the previous council through the municipal capital book borrowing board. However, this council asked staff to begin the process of tendering for a ladder truck for the fire department, for the delivery in early two, twenty twenty-three. To do that, financing needs to be arranged before we can issue the tender documents. So the nine hundred and ten thousand dollars below request should be needed, shouldn't be needed until twenty twenty-three. The below motion is the first step. The below motion is the first step in the process and will allow us to sub to submit an application for the December eighth twenty twenty-one. Hearing of the board. And then the motion just asked for the the money from the funds.
Thank you deputy mayor for the condensed version again, this is something obviously we talked about during our strategic priorities, so we'll. Debate it next week, but I'd say based on everything, it's ready to come forward.
Just before we jump, sorry, I just wanted, this is more for Paul, Paul, and the. The application for the December eighth twenty twenty-one board isn't quite correct, the meetings in January will fix that, just before I forget tomorrow, sorry.
Thank you for that, though, that's a good catch, I don't think I would have picked up on that one.
January, it'll be on the next one, okay? And the next one is F A two one 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 zero eight. And it's the year and reserve transfers. And again, that is the end of the year motions, council makes a motion to transfer amounts between the various capital up and operating and reserve funds. This is required as per regulation of the local governance acts. The below amounts were based on an updated twenty twenty-one projections of the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six budget. Recently passed by council. And there's a note there from staff. The amounts might change by December sixth, but they'll put them in. And so the most motions are there.
Very good job this evening condensing those for us, thank you very much. I don't actually tonight, um, so just if anyone that's due to council has any questions, please reach out to Mr. Spear, but this is. General housekeeping and generally just the timing of projects that we were anticipating of starting this year that won't be started next year, so. We do have to transfer those as as we can't carry it forward, we have to transfer to reserves, correct, Mr. Spear? Be the best way to say it, to be up to municipal accounting standard.
Yeah, by regulation of the act.
There we go, so thank you very much again, Deputy Mayor Akagi, that was a great job, you had long motions and you summarized them quickly, we'll move on to councillor Blanchard.
Thank you, worship, mine's relatively short, so maybe I don't need to summarize too much, but it's P W two one 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 zero nine. And it is an amendment A four to bylaw nineteen oh seven, a bylaw related to water systems, water rates, wastewater systems. And wastewater rates, with the recent passing of the town of St Andrews budget for twenty twenty-two, the town increased the water rates for residential and commercial users. As such, council has to amend schedule B flat rates for water consumption and wastewater disposal. Under bylaw nineteen oh seven, a bylaw related to water systems, water rates, water systems, oh, sorry. Water rates, I'm going too quickly, water rates, wastewater systems and wastewater rates. This change only needs one reading of council as it is amending the schedule, a schedule to a bylaw, please see the attached document for a copy of amendment A four. And the motion is that council approves amendment A four to bylaw nineteen oh seven, a bylaw related to waste or water systems, water rates. Wastewater systems and wastewater rates.
Thank you very much councillor Blanchard, so we'll bring that forward, is that's what we need to do in order to meet our budget forecast for this year. But we'll, we'll discuss that next week, but the wording looks correct and. Just for technical, Mister Knopper, next week I would just have to read schedule B at that point if that was to pass, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you very much, at this point, I think that's it, councillor Blanchard, I think we're on to councillor Neil. Short motion.
Your worship. Getting caught up myself, sorry. Was not short.
Page thirty-seven to councillor Neil.
Summarize a two-page document into two lines, so it's.
This is P S two one 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 zero eight, the subject is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Resolution. On the R C M P collective agreement. I'll just read the background for you again, in August twenty twenty-one, the federal government and the National Police Federation representing nearly twenty thousand R C M P officers. Across Canada completed negotiations on a new collective bargaining agreement. The agreement includes a significant increase in pay for R C M P officers and retroactive pay dating back to twenty seventeen. This will cause a substantial financial impact nationally on municipalities that use contracted R C M P policing services. Municipalities are responsible for providing the retroactive costs and increase in pay moving forward. Municipalities were not consulted during the contract process and are now affected by having to absorb these additional costs. Provided is a background report from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. The F C M is gathering resolutions for municipalities to support the federal government absorbing the increased retroactive. And not downloading it onto the municipalities, so for the town of St Andrews, we could be looking at an increase of ninety-five thousand dollars. Or a twenty-three percent salary increase. But again, this in the past has been based off of three officers, when I guess over the last few years, we've only been paying for two. So that leaves the question as to whether we're going to pay for the two or three positions that are costing possibly sixty-three thousand dollars or a sixty percent increase. And I will save you from me reading the motion at the moment where it is quite long.
Perfect, and there's the the quick summary of the motion is that the town of St Andrews would basically support the Federation of Canadian Municipalities to say that. When the federal government negotiated the contract with the R C M P for retroactive pay, the town of St Andrews wasn't consulted on that and we just got the bill for it. So we're asking for the federal government to pay for that increase since they're the ones that made that agreement without consulting with the town of St Andrews. And it also states that in the future, they're going to be making. Negotiations where the municipalities have to pay, the municipality should be a partner. In indicating what they can afford to pay for their own financial sustainability, is that a good enough summary, Mr. Spear?
Very much so, your worship, yeah, and being St Andrews is one of many across the country that are being surprised by this.
So we, if we go for it tomorrow, I'll read the law, the long version for everybody next week, so bring your popcorn. And that's it for that motion, I think that, yep, you've got another one as well, don't you councillor Neil?
I do, yes, thank you worship, this is P S two one 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 zero seven. And the subject is the town of St Andrews Fire Department trunk mobile radio system purchase. So this has to do again with the town switching over from the. Original dispatch we had with St Stephen to the new trunk mobile radio system. And the fire department is requesting twelve thousand dollars of unbudgeted funds to complete the purchase of new portable radios.
Seems like there's not, seems like that's almost mandatory, so we'll, we'll have that motion next week, it sounds like it has to come forward. And that's it for your portfolio, thank you councillor Neil, councillor Hurdle.
Thank you very much, worship, this is regarding reference number, excuse me, B T H C two one 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 zero one. And the subject is Anchors Landing Quest for Agreement Extension on Residential Garbage Collection, so essentially what. This one is about is Anchors Landing is looking for an extension of a five-year, the previous five-year resident, residential garbage collection. Looking to extend it for another five years, and the motion is is the same that we would grant that extension.
Thank you, that's a great summary, I'll note that council that we can debate it next week, but something to keep in mind is that. The additional term is is flexible, you guys can amend that as need be and just something to think about for next week is that. You know, we're hoping to have more apartment buildings in the town of St Andrews, so you may want to make that. You know, a shorter distance, that way you can renegotiate as part of that whole process to make sure that every apartment building in the town of St Andrews is treated equally. Right, so just, just remember that for next week when you're in turn debate, that it's not an all or nothing, that can be amended next week if anyone wishes.
Your worship, just a quick question in regards to that, do you want us to leave the motion as is or leave it a little more? I guess put some blanks in there so council can debate the term and stuff, versus opposes, we're just negotiating a five-year term at this point.
Personally, again, that'll be council's desire, but I'd almost like to just extend it for a year while we figure out what we're doing with other apartment buildings, then we. Might be able to set a policy versus just, you know, debate it at much length, but again, that's over to council's desire. If you want to leave it blank and debate that next week, or if council wants to say leave it five years, but at one year, two year. Council's desire, and we're not debating it, but is there any preference on the wording, because that is the purpose of this particular meeting? Any thoughts?
Maybe, Mister Knopper, you you could just put an additional blank years terms from January first. Two thousand twenty-two to blank, and then they can determine that at the meeting, they've seen this, so that. And the letter requested is for additional five years, so they know what their opponent's request is, and then we can fill in those couple of blanks at the meeting time.
Does that work for council, just leave it blank and we'll set the years next year versus, you know. Ideally, we set the policy when we're, you know, when we're looking at other apartment buildings, so that way again, it's consistent with everybody. Okay, so I think we're good at that one, then with the blanks, everyone seemed to be in support of that, Mr. Spear, so we can, I think that was that your only? That was it, resident councillor Hurdle, so we're on a councillor Goumichel, making great timing, guys and girls.
Thank you worship, the next motion is R C S two one one. Zero four two one 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 zero four, and the subject is recreation director position for the town of St Andrews. And the background reads, the Southwest Brunswick Service Commission has passed resolutions to collect two percent, two cents per one hundred dollar assessments. From the L S Ds to help fund recreational facilities in Charlotte County. As part of this new model, some communities may create rec director positions provided with the reported draft copies of the. Of the job description and an agreement to be signed between the town and the service commission. As part of the process, council need to pass motions supporting the agreement between town and service commission. And approve the new job description, once the approvals have been complete, staff will start the process of filling the physician and there's a asterisk. Staff are still in negotiations and the updated documents will come forward at our December sixth meeting. The motion reads, the council proves the job description of the rec director position with with the town of St Andrews and the competition be posted. And the second motion reads, the council approves the Southwest N B Regional Cooperative Recreational. Post Sharing Agreement between the town of St Andrews and the Southwest N B Service Commission.
Thank you very much, those two motions councillor Goumichel, obviously, we we talked about the fitness facility, we wanted to hit the ground running early next year, so it's important that we get this approved. So we'll bring it forward, I will say that if you haven't had a chance to look through the job description in particular. Especially councillors like councillor Goumichel, even councillor Hurdle, some of you that have had some experience around that particular. I'd say position or at least industry. I definitely reach out to Mr. Spear, Mr. Knopper, because ideally we would have the wording adjusted prior to Wednesday. So we can have it in our package versus debate the wording of the job description on the fly, it'd be a lot better. You got, had a back and forth with staff just to make sure that there's nothing that we're leaving out, because this will be what goes out there to find the ideal candidate. But we'll bring it forward for next week for formal approval, but there is still opportunity for input. Thank you councillor Goumichel, councillor Heenan.
Sorry, your worship, for some reason, my laptop died and. Anyway, I had to come to my iPad, so that's why the background has changed.
I'll jump off and deputy mayor Akagi will lead this one for you.
Okay, so councillor Heenan, we're looking forward to listening to you with the Van Horn Garden Homes, you're on next.
Van Horn Garden Homes, I'll just get myself caught up, there we go. Okay. This is a reference number. P E D two one 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 zero two. Amendment bylaw Z twenty-one dash oh four, six oh three three six six. N B L T D Van Horn Garden Homes rezer, rezoning for property identification number of zero one three. Two six zero eight one, and this is the first reading. It basically is that the Van Horn Gardens home is requesting a rezoning for the P I D number that I've mentioned. A three point four acre lot at the southwest corner of Moat Drive and the Bar Road. The request is to move from the estate residential zone to multiple residential one zone to create a housing development. Please see the attached report from Alexander Gopin, senior planning. That council gives leave for first reading to amendment bylaw Z twenty-one dash oh four. Rezoning of P I D zero one three two six zero eight one. The Van Horn Garden Homes, and the motion, the other motion will read that council requests views of the preliminary. Advisory Committee for the town of St Andrews as per section one one zero of the Community Planning Act on Amendment Bylaw. Zid twenty-one dash oh four rezoning of P I D zero one three two six zero eight one. For six oh three three six six N B L T D Van Horn Garden Homes, your worship.
You're my own minister, councillor Heenan, it's not preliminary, though it's planning. The planning advisory committee. Yes, you did great on your iPad.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, now we can bring back.
Deputy mayor, there's still one, deputy mayor.
Have another motion. Okay, that that council sets the date of January the tenth twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M. Through an electronic meeting for a public hearing of objections as per section one one one. Of the Community Planning Act on Amendment Bylaw Z twenty-one dash oh four. Rezoning of P I D numbered zero one three two six zero eight one for six oh three three six six. N B Limited Van Horn Garden Homes, thank you, your worship.
Excellent councillor Heenan, I'm sorry I didn't flip the page on you.
I gotta flip, it just took me a minute.
We can bring back the mayor now because we're finished with that one, unless council you have something to add, whether it's not well written or whatever. No, I don't see anybody, so.
Thank you very much deputy mayor Akagi for leading in that, I did notice early on that councillor Heenan had a country accent that I never knew he had there of. Cowboy accents, that's. You should read all motions like that moving forward. We're gonna switch to your next one councillor, he and another development potentially in town.
Yes, thank you worship and council, this is P E D two one 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 zero three. Amendment bylaw Z twenty-one dash oh five rezoning of P I D one five zero three six zero three one. For Bell Max Incorporated, the first reading, your worship. Bell Max is is requesting a rezoning up for P I D one five zero three six zero three one, it's a two point. Eighteen acre lot between Moat, I believe Moat is, I don't know if that's spelt correctly or not, but Moat and Canterbury close subdivision. The request is to move the estate residential zone to multiple residential two zone to create a housing development. The attached is provided, one of the motions would be that council grants leave for the first reading to the amendment bylaw. Of Zid twenty-one dash oh five rezoning of P I D one five zero three six zero one for Bell Max Incorporated. Another motion would be that council requests views of the PAC or Planning Advisory Committee for the town of St Andrews. As per section one one zero Community Planning Act on Amendment of Bylaws in twenty-one dash oh three rezoning of the same kid. There is another motion attached to this year worship that council sets the date of Monday, January the tenth two thousand and twenty-two at seven P M. Through electronic meeting for a hearing of objections as per section one one. One of the Community Planning Act on Amendment Bylaws in twenty-one dash oh five. Rezoning of the P I D number we've been using for Bell Max Incorporated, your worship.
Thank you very much councillor Heenan, so. We aren't debating this motion, but does anyone have any questions in regards or require any additional information from staff before we take this? Is there any other concerns at this time, or information you need to make a, to actually make a decision on this, there has been a request for rezoning. So the the applicant deserves to know the response from the town of St Andrews.
Don't have a question, but Moat doesn't have the E on it.
Now that was it, I knew there was a little something missing.
Well, we'll get that, we'll get that amended for next week, for sure, yeah, absolutely. All right, so we'll discuss that next week then, council. Moving right along here, sorry about that. And I think that's actually the last motion, so I'll jump back to our agenda. And just confirm, yeah, so that is the last motion, so we're now at the review of registers. There's three items that need to be discussed and just get some consensus from council, so we'll be looking to. Do that fairly quickly, there was a request that we got from Kayleen Maurer in regards to the winter parking ban. Basically indicating that. A lot of people that rent the town of St Andrews are not provided with proper parking and by not allowing people to park on the street, it really puts them in a. In a binding situation to find parking, so. So I noticed that some council had some questions about this. So I thought we would actually just get it out there if we were looking to amend the winter parking ban. Or just so we can respond to this particular letter, I wanted to get council consensus in an open forum. So did anybody want to actually voice that they think the winter parking ban should be removed? And if so, this would be the time to bring it up. Otherwise, we'll let the the letter writer know that unfortunately, that is not something that the town of St. Andrews can do at this time. Counsel Blanchard.
Thank you, your worship. Um, not so much that it needs to be removed, referring to the winter parking ban. But I do, I do sympathize certainly with with the Ms. Maurer. On on the situation for folks who are living, renting downtown, especially water streets. You know, I note similar winter parking bans exist in other municipalities. I grew up in St. John, certainly in the uptown area, there's a winter parking ban. The difference I sort of see between our municipality and theirs, obviously, other than the size. Is the fact that they have a number of public parking lots and or lots that people can access through the winter. So they can pay to to pay their vehicle off the street. Whereas here in town, we are, we're imposing a winter parking ban without any real options for for folks who live in those areas. So, you know, we're trying to encourage people to stay and live here year round. Obviously, we know we do have a seasonal population, but but that's something we always talk about. But we have to provide year round services, I feel like. And I'm wondering, there were some suggestions made in the letter, it wasn't just a complaint. They she did offer some suggestions as to possibilities, things that we could explore, and I would certainly be open to that. One of their recommendations or one of the possibilities was simply opening up access to. The the parking spaces that exist down by the the whale watching area down there by the wharf. If that was a possibility that we could, again, maintain the parking ban on the street. But provide whatever access we could to some spaces which could be made available to to residents, year round residents. Sort of in that downtown area, we may not, obviously, we we wouldn't be able to provide something for everybody. But even something I think might be a start, might be at least an option for some of those people. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you very much, Counsel Blanchard. So it's just important to note that it doesn't necessarily have to be that location that you're proposing, simply the fact that that's where the snow gets dumped. So, but you're saying to find a spot and you picture that to be paid parking? Is that the way that it would work or would it be?
I think from my perspective, I mean, it could be a nominal fee, like I said, if we're gonna, if the town is providing it, I'm not opposed to some kind of a nominal fee. But but certainly something very affordable and it could, like I said, it could be a first come, first served basis. But but that that's sort of the way I would, I could envision it. But again, I'm open to whatever ideas that town staff or town or council might have on the issue.
Any other member of, thank you, Counsel Blanchard, Counsel Heenan.
Yes, your worship and counsel. Um, Counselor Blanchard, as you probably know, there's lots of advertised parking spots in the grocery store for people to rent their own parking spot. I do know that the service station down here in the town plat rents spots out for people who live in the town plat. I really feel it's going to be a hodgepodge, it's going to require someone, if we did do anything like that, it's going to require enforcement. And then there's going to be issues regarding the people leaving the cars there for a longer period of time. And since you're from St. John, Counselor Blanchard, you remember the fiasco when the city of St. John decided to allow Douglas Avenue. To park on both sides of the street and towards the end of the year, it was unpassable. Because people didn't clean their cars off, people didn't move their cars, they were left there, they were wedged into the snow and the ice. And I just foresee it very hard to police this. I feel, you know, I feel, I feel very sympathetic towards people who do not have parking. And yes, you're right, we're trying to keep them in the town plat. But I do feel that we're opening a can of worms if we start, then then we'll say, well, we made these spots available, why can't we make these? And it would just be a continuous cycle, just my two cents worth, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Counsel Heenan, any other member of council? Counsel Gomishel.
Thank you, worship. I would tend to agree with Counselor Blanchard that the the town of St. Andrews has some very creative people on staff. And I would ask staff to perhaps think it over and bring forward some possible solutions. Our staff has shown themselves to be quite resourceful and they can think outside the box. So let's, let's ask them to propose a few things and then we can have a debate on those. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Counsel Gomishel, anyone else? Counsel Hurdle.
Well, I just wanted to ask if if we know, I guess, the scope of the issue. We did get a letter, obviously, but I'm just curious to know, as Counsel Heenan said, there are parking spots available to to rent. I guess at this point, I'm not really sure the size of the concern from the community.
Through you, Counsel Hurdle, to answer the question, I don't think we have a complete handle of how it is. There is a number of landlords in the town of St. Andrews that do not have the appropriate amount of parking for their tenants. You know, sometimes it's, you know, it's not their fault, they just don't have the land, literally, if you're a lot of buildings downtown, you don't own a lot of land outside the building. But with that being said, there is a lot of circumstances where certain parking lots have been designed. And landlords did not put enough parking in when they should have been looking at it in their design as well. You know, and the other thing too is if I'm a landlord, I would adjust my rent according to what I'm providing. And if I'm not providing a parking spot, then I would assume that there'd be some type of reduction in rent versus someone who provided you with adequate parking. So hopefully that helps a little bit of it. So I, I don't think we have an answer to how many. I dare say that there's, there's certainly going to be a handful and I do expect that majority, not all, but majority are probably in our historic downtown business district. Deputy Mayor Akagi.
And maybe the Legion would rent their parking lot. I'm not sure, it's just an open parking lot, so maybe that could be an answer to your, to the problem situation. Just offering that out, not sure what's happening with it. But they might be willing to maybe rent the spots.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I appreciate that. So let's just get a quick show of hands with, how many members of council would like staff to just investigate any potential options to have a private parking spot for a fee? I don't see how it cannot have a fee, to be honest, you need some type of permit system, otherwise like. You know, it's done in other communities. I know if you look at Anchors Landing, all the tenants have to move at a certain time, their cars and things like that, it's not an easy process. The other thing is I'd like staff to investigate liability when you're plowing around cars and there's a lot of snow. It actually turns icy and there can be damage as well to take into consideration on this. Because even though it's in a parking lot, you still need to get around it, like you just can't leave the snow around it, the banks do build up. So there's a lot to figure out, but if that's what council's desires for staff, come back with a report of recommendations, we can do that. Just to show hands if you'd like that, or the alternative is that you just respond that it's unfortunately. Landlord tenant issue when it comes to parking. So I'll ask the first question is who's in favor of staff coming back, seeing if there is any suggestions we have or saying that they have to have one. But just to put on their, like you said, like I think it was Counsel Gomishel said, staff's very creative. Perhaps there's some type of recommendation with giving them a couple of weeks that they can come up with. That would be great, actually, the way I'm.
Yeah, near you, Mr. Spear, you're breaking up.
Am I any better now?
Yeah.
Okay. Of staff of grave concerns about allowing this, I know it seems relatively easy, but think of it this way. We always get a handful of those blinding thirty to fifty centimeter snows every year. And our poor plow drivers are going out down near blind, I mean, we've been in there when we've been driving down from St. John and things. And you're driving down the highway and you can barely see through a broken lane. Well, imagine being the first person out on the road that is trying to work around those cars. You talk about enforcement, unless we're putting in a gated system, enforcement will be about impossible, it really will. There'll be other people within the town fighting for those spots. We can ticket them all to places, but if someone's paid for a space, then they'll stick it anywhere. I mean, even our parking lots, you know, they try to move fast and efficient. And if we've got vehicles stuck every nimbly wimbly way, it's going to be a problem that they're going to be working around them and things. And it's, it's a real concern. As previously said, there's private operators into town who offer operate land. The Legion may be willing.
Think he froze, but yeah, I know that. Like Carl Savoy has a private parking lot in downtown St. Andrews, there are some, there are some options. So even though he froze, staff's recommendation on this one would be that we do not make it a municipal issue on private parking lots. But again, the authority is yours, if you want them to go and 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 look for a creative solution, then we, again, that's, that's within your authority to request. So at this point, I'll, I'll look for someone to to request that we explore options, just to show a hands if you'd like staff to explore options. Counsel Blanchard, anyone else, Counsel O'Neil, Counsel Gomishel? And anyone that would rather just respond that unfortunately, there is no solution that the town of St. Andrews has at this time, that is a landlord tenant issue. And there is private parking lots in the town of St. Andrews that they can acquire on renting. Just raise your hand if that's the preferred course of method that you'd rather go. And look at that, it's a three, three tie, and I will go with the, it is a private issue, the town of St. Andrews with such little time and the fax knows already on the ground now. Unfortunately, I don't think that we'll have a solution that is safe and and well thought out. And, you know, when snow is covered, I don't know how you know who's supposed to be parked there or not when they're all covered in snow, right? So it's, it'll be hard for enforcement. So at this time, I will side with the with the with the nays, we'll call them, the the private issue. And we'll go from there, so that's four, three. Charlotte County Dollar Ride, they ever request for a personal, maybe Mr. Spear, you're back if you just want to talk briefly to what Charlotte County Dollar Ride's requesting.
He's still frozen.
What we can hear, but Mr. Knopper, I think it came from the the request that we had with. Eastern Charlotte Waterways where we had a designated spot, I think they were looking for their own designated spot, but there's to be in downtown St. Andrews, is that correct?
Through your, through your worship, that is one of the options that they are asking, they've also suggested it could be up at the arena. It's just a debate of where to place it at this point, it is for their transportation ban, so it does help with accessibility, mobility. And the 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 current drivers are also willing to move it prior to the winter storms. They're just looking for a more centralized location to post the vehicle.
Thank you, council, we look for your direction, but parking is a premium in downtown, it is a vehicle that services all of Charlotte County, so it's not a home base here. So to take a parking spot away for something that will only be in the community for a fraction of the time, I'd recommend that in the summer. There is lots of space at the W C O'Neil Arena. So in the winter, you don't need a spot as usually, it's not that hard to find a place in downtown St. Andrews. So I'd actually make the recommendation that we approve a spot at the arena where we have the other one, and that's almost our transportation area. So people know that if they're looking for transportation, that is the hub of where we park those. If anyone feels differently, please voice that, but I would be myself looking for support to say that we give them a place at the arena. Where the other one that'll be located through Eastern Charlotte Waterways is. And as well, it's important to note that we are planning to put a camera there, so a camera on the vehicle would also be, if it is left there, definitely an asset to have. So does anybody have any opposition to those thoughts? All right, that'll be the direction that we go, so we'll make that one fairly quick. The last one is the ice rental, we got a a letter from Ryan Martin of the St. Andrews Senators. Basically, at nine P M, the Garcelon Center at the in St. Stephen reduces their ice rate. I believe our, the rentals in St. Andrews are either eight thirty or eight forty-five. And our fees are about two hundred dollars an hour, and I believe in St. Stephen's about a hundred and fifty. So they are asking for a late night reduction in rental costs. But again, these are another thing that we wanted to counsel the way in on. Important to note that we do have added expense this year, we have someone at the door that this council passed budget. So that's something in consideration. I will say that although I'm not a part of this ice hockey team, it's, it's important to note that for council that St. Stephen canceled this past week. Because they still are under the impression that they only have fifteen minutes after games to get their gear off and showered. And they just don't want to come down here, they're that rush. So I think there's a little bit of an education element that we need to get out there, that our arena is back to the previous policies with exception of. You have to wear a mask and you have to show your vaccination records. Other than that, you know, encourage physical, physical distancing, but from my understanding, just to get that education out there, that be correct, Mr. Knopper? That that would be the way that it is, it's, it's once you're vaccinated, wear a mask, encourage social distancing. But other than that, the, for the most part, it's, it's, it's status quo to pre pandemic, I guess you could say, as far as the time that you have, the showers are available, is that correct?
Through your worship, that's correct, it's, it's basically back to the standard ice practices, again, except for proof of vaccination and mask wearing at all times.
Perfect, so I just wanted to get that out there because that was, that was something that came up last week. So as far as the reduction of fees, I don't know if anyone thinks that we should remain at our ice rental. The other thing to take in consideration that if I was running the ice at eight o'clock and I found out I could save fifty bucks, I'd probably bump my ice time back to nine o'clock. I just don't think that that's necessarily a good business strategy. But over to you guys, if you'd like to see any amendment on that, would anybody like to see a late night ice rental fee? Okay, I'm not seeing any, for me, it's more to make sure that people have the adequate amount of time to take their gear off and shower and not be rushed out the door. That I think that's the complaint that I was hearing the most of, actually, it wasn't the the fee that's associated with it. And it's important to note that the ice surface does cost the taxpayer of St. Andrews a lot of money. So the people that use it unfortunately should, you know, do as much as they can to help offset that for the taxpayer of St. Andrews. So there was no motion to support that, so we'll move on from that. Nothing on our new business question period, did anything come up, Mr. Knopper?
Your worship, I actually have one question, well, it's a part of question here. So this is from Silvy Gunnet, apologies if I misspell your, or say your last name, at twelve St. Croix. It is about the parking needs for new buildings within the community. Council discussed at a previous meeting that was presented on the the upcoming zoning bylaw changes. Be one the per apartment instead of one point two five, does this include visitor parking in winter? If you have visitors, where are they going to park at night if there's only one parking space per apartment? Is there provision for that to change in urban planning? And that was the questions provided.
Thank you, and I know Mr. Gopin's on here, but Mr. Spear, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So the one parking spot unfortunately does not include visitor parking. If you had a six unit building, you would be required to have six parking spots, is that correct, Mr. Spear? Before the spirit of it was for people to have two cars or have visitor parking, right, with the one point two five? So that's the request for our planners was to remove that because there is some tight lots that are having a hard time with the with the parking and the square footage requirements, is that correct, Mr. Spear?
Yes, yes.
So that's something for council to consider when we go to next reading on the zoning bylaw is, as we have these letters saying that, you know, that it's hard to find parking. That is the only instrument we have before the place is developed in order to ensure that there is adequate parking. So we're gonna lessen to that question's comment, if we're gonna lessen the parking requirement. We're unfortunately going to probably see this to continue to be a letter that we might receive in the future. Mainly for visitors, I had a friend came down, there was no place in the park, they got a ticket or they got, you know what I mean, like it's, or they got plowed in. It's gonna be ongoing, but that's a very fair question based on the agenda tonight and something for council to compare. Any questions for or any comments from any member of council? All right, myself, I have nothing this evening, no request to go to closed session for this one that I'm aware of. So I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn, Deputy Mayor Akagi, seconded by Counselor Blanchard, all in favor of adjourning?
Hi.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, council.